I guess it's time for me to call when the city council meeting of January 19th, 2021 to order. And roll call, Neil?
Counselor Ben Gordon. Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
Counselor Woodrow.
Here.
And Counselor Pishanary.
Here.
I would like you all to accompany me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation indivisible, indivisible, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Did I get that right? Okay. These instructions. As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us online. God, I can't see the light. Please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. There is one time this evening designated for public testimony and will be listed as business from the audience on the agenda. If you're joining us online with a tablet, smartphone, or computer and wish to speak during that time, please use the chat window. It looks like a speech balloon on the upper right corner. Please send a comment to the organizer with your name, ward, or general location and the subject you would like to speak about. You can select the organizer at the bottom of chat window. I will call you when it's your turn to speak. For people calling in my phone only, you're in listen mode and cannot be called upon. The order of, let's see, the order of public testimony will be as follows. Anybody who submitted a chat or anybody who submitted email in advance, as is remaining time, Neil will read emails into the record. Now, what do I have next here? Springfield, let be anything?
No, your next item is the consent calendar.
Okay, consent calendar. Do we have accept or change?
I move to approve, to accept. I moved to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call.
Counselor Ben Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Yes.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pishanary.
Yes.
No public hearings tonight.
Business from the audience.
If you'll give us just a moment, we'll get the queue together for folks that we have waiting.
Thank you. How many, how many do we have? Do you have any idea?
So far, we have about six, but they still may be coming in. Our first speaker counselor is Ben Christensen. And Ben, I will activate your microphone for you.
You have three minutes.
Ben, you're self muted. You'll just need to unmute your microphone.
Oh, hello? Yeah, okay. Our Declaration of Independence says, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, and though the Constitution hadn't been written yet, Jefferson was referring to the rights that they would later put in the Constitution that he also referred to as unalienable." On the day that King said the words, "I have a dream," at the steps of Lincoln Memorial, he was all, he said the founders also wrote a check that he called, that came back unmarked insufficient funds. He's talking about the same set of rights that Jefferson and the idea that these rights have not existed for all people in this country. Mayor Lundberg's letter, she refers to engaging citizens and she calls them gadfly. In the Greek philosophy, the gadfly bites another animal and it sucks the blood from that wound that is left behind. Traditionally, this term is used to devalue the voices of people who are critical of their government. At the time of the founding of the United States, it was very different from the European democracies or monarchies of the 16th century, where the wealthy and the aristocratic elite were the only ones who were allowed to govern. A Frenchman named Alexa Tocfield wrote about his experiences living in the United States with one clear observation, the level of citizen participation in government. Using this term gadfly just to describe your fellow citizens, it shows us level of contempt for the basic ideas that this country is founded upon. Jefferson makes another clear observation in his writings that the government, that the right to govern is voluntarily given by the governed. But it has one great cost, it can be taken away. We have many examples of this in formal declarations, saying we no longer want to be part of another country, a large portion of a country seceding over the institution of slavery, and a million people standing in front of the Lincoln Memorial demanding equal rights. They are all withdraw of consent, as Jefferson describes in the founding documents. The city of Springfield has a long history of using its security forces to silence the people that would speak out through violence, intimidation, and fear. This culmination culminated in an act of violence last summer, or last summer in July, when the police attacked an unarmed line of protesters. We also see this with a lack of transparency from the city manager's office and the derogatory language used by the city council and the mayor to devalue the voices of the citizens who would challenge the people in power. Let me make this clear, this is an assault on the founding principles of our country and is unacceptable of an elected official. I'm calling on the city council to build an environment that encourages citizen participation through direct action and engaging the city officials exactly as the people who founded this country would have intended. Or we, the people, withdraw our consent. No justice, no peace.
Perfect timing.
Counselor, our next speaker is Lauren Williams. And Lauren, we'll get your microphone going here. Should be able to unmute on your side, Lauren, and you'll be ready to go.
Hi, yeah, it seems to be a little confusion. The chat box isn't available to me. I can't see that on my phone or on my computer, but regardless, can you all hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
I'm fine.
Yeah, okay, okay, great. I, I, I live in Ward Two, as you know. I often go for modest runs from Ward Two to Ward Three, and in that roughly three mile loop, I passed the home of somebody who participated in the violence at our state Capitol, as well as the insurrection in DC. A couple who are proud and organizing neo-Nazis, and another couple who identify as Proud Boys and organize violence locally and nationally. And these are just the people that I'm aware of. Why is there silence around actual danger and violence but for peaceful civic engagement via public comment gadflies? This type of behavior from leadership unknowingly or not that contributes to injustice against its own community members. Public service is the privilege of representing those same individuals. That being said, the responsibility that now rests on each and every one of your shoulders is to denounce white supremacist terrorism and the sentiments expressed by the former mayor in her resignation. I ultimately think this was a distraction by somebody who hasn't held, who hasn't had a seated position for almost a year, and I'd like to focus on what went unmentioned, like the need for police reform. SPD comprises a full 40% of the general fund. The lawsuits that have been brought against SPD show a consistent problem with the culture. The settlements that people receive are deserved, however, the police should be the ones paying to rectify the wrongs they committed. If this were the case, perhaps our department would be attempting to shift the culture and would stop hurting people instead of learning no lessons and providing no feedback to involved officers when they perpetrate significant harm against members of the public or those within their own department. While there's still so much to be done, I'm proud of the first step city council has taken and the progress that's been made. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Amy Cottron. And Amy, if you unmute your microphone, you should be good.
All right, can y'all hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, tonight, I'm not going to tell you anything you haven't heard before. In fact, I'm actually not going to tell you anything because we've been telling you this for the last six, eight months. You know that there is an issue with SPD. You know that it has a toxic culture. You know all of this, yet you still want to keep their funding just as high as it's always been. You all know what's going on. Me voicing it here, it's pretty obvious by former Mayor Lundberg's remarks in her letter, what she thinks of us speaking here. And honestly, I feel like that culture permeates to a number of you council members. That being said, you know what we want. You know that we're not a fringe group like Mayor Lundberg, or former Mayor Lundberg acts like we are. And based on that, I just want to say shame on all of you. Shame on the city of Springfield. I am actually leaving this city shortly, and part of the reason is because of how I don't feel safe in this city. If I got pulled over, I would not feel safe. And all of you are permitting this to happen. As this continues to happen, you'll see more quality members of your community who contribute and do things for, you know, for their neighbors, for their friends. They will also leave. It may just be across the river to Eugene. It may be elsewhere. And those who participate in horrible acts like Rob Davis, Richard Elsie, and others will continue to call this place their home. I think I just got to leave it at that because, you know, you've heard it all. I cede the rest of my time.
Thank you. Sorry you feel that way. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Ji Wang. And Ji, if you unmute your microphone, you should be ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Xia. Thanks for your time. What happened at DC on January 6th was not an accident. Those the mass terrorists and the white supremacists were not suddenly shown up in DC. They came across the country, and their power has been reinforced by local law enforcement and local cities' tolerance for decades. Many Oregon white supremacists at DC also stormed the Capitol building in Salem on December 21st. There are Tim Davis, Rob Davis, Gina Shippman, and Richard Elsie. This was also not an accident. All of these white supremacists from Springfield were also at Thurston collaboratively working with SPD to hurt the BIPOC community on July 29th last year. The trauma they caused to BIPOC community is not healing. Tim Davis' violence at DC was not an accident. Rob Davis was arrested at Salem on January 1st was not an accident. Richard Elsie was arrested in Eugene by using a flagpole to assault people was not an accident on January 9th. What made them so entitled to spread their violence from Springfield to state to national level? What a critical role of SPD has played in the last year to reinforce this local violent white supremacist? Why Springfield city counselors haven't used the language of white supremacy to condemn local violence, white supremacy, the violence after January 6th? It was a darkest day of damaging American democracy in history. They were so close to killing these officials in the Congress building. These officials can be any of the officials who serve the city as well. Believing China till 35 years old, Mayor Lamburger's letter just sounds like a Chinese Communist Party dictator's propaganda. It's ignorant and dangerous. Her legacy of fostering local white supremacists should be ended. Last weekend, I just shared with a friend that the current Springfield city counselors are showing change to learn by listening to concerned citizens' voices. It's time for Springfield city counselors to grow out of Mayor Lamburger's non-culture sensitivity, which is very outdated in the 21st century. I demand Springfield city council to denounce white supremacy because white supremacy should not be welcomed by Oregon, should not be welcomed and reforced by Springfield city anymore. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Counselor, the next speaker is Dana Herkett.
Dana, I guess you're up.
Dana, your microphone, there you go.
Good evening. My name is Dana Herkett, and I live in Ward One. My statement will be echoing some of the points already brought up, but I am reading it in its entirety because we all deserve to be heard. The deadly takeover of our Capitol on January 6th was absolutely bone chilling. I hope we can all agree on that. I saw the statement released by Lane County officials and signed by Council President Mo, so I was glad to see the violence acknowledged and condemned by our local officials, so thank you for doing that. I'm here to again point out that we undoubtedly have factions of the same highly radicalized and heavily weaponized white supremacists right here in Springfield, some of whom were in Washington causing carnage on the 6th, like others have brought up, and who have so far been able to brutalize and intimidate people in our communities without consequence. The FBI has stated that white supremacist terrorist attacks will only increase in both frequency and severity throughout 2021. So counselors, what are you doing to ensure the safety of your constituents, particularly members of our BIPOC, Jewish, and LGBTQIA+ communities, and those who have already been targets of white supremacist violence and who already feel completely unprotected and victimized by our law enforcement? Furthermore, were any of SPD's employees in attendance at the Capitol attack? You are our only voice, so we need you to ask these important questions. We are at the mercy of both your action and your inaction, counselors. I hope you recognize that. Now more than ever, we need to hear this council loudly, publicly, and unwaveringly denounce white supremacy. We need to hear where you stand. And I'd also like to address Christine Lundberg's resignation letter in just saying that it's completely inappropriate that part of a public statement from an elected official was used to call some of their constituents petty names. This attempt to bully people into disengaging from their involvement in local government is suppressive, undemocratic, and sadly, very telling. Alienating and othering marginalized voices is never acceptable, especially when it comes from a leader. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Neil?
Counselor, our next speaker is Shay Gallagher.
Hi Shay, you're up.
Yes, okay, can you hear me now?
You're good.
Yes.
Okay. Well, if you've already heard from other speakers tonight, we have a real problem here. Not only has the Springfield Police Department been remiss in investigating and arresting the people in our own community who participated in a violent insurrection, they also haven't given us any assurances that neither the department nor any of its staff or officers support that insurrection. And as the federal investigation continues, more and more law enforcement officers are being identified as members of the mob that invaded our Capitol and used a fire extinguisher to brutally beat a fellow officer to death. That's how much blue lives mattered to that mob. Our community, all of you here on the city council, we all deserve to know if any of our Springfield officers were present in that mob. Given the anti-Semitic and racist slogans of those terrorists, minority members of our community deserve to know if any of our Springfield officers were in that mob. Given their attack on media, our local journalists, many of whom are crowdfunding their own anti-ballistic gear, deserve to know if any of our Springfield officers were in that mob. As members of the city council, one of the vows you take is to uphold the Constitution. It's not too much that you demand that members of the police department you oversee also uphold our Constitution and our democracy. But on the eve of the inauguration, instead of a disavowal of treason, armed insurrection, racism, and anti-Semitism, instead of vigorous investigation and the arrest of local people involved in that treason, Springfield Police Chief Lewis issues as a statement that there are, quote, "no known specific risks in Springfield" and gave us another example of his unwillingness to prioritize the safety of our community from the ongoing threats of white-ringed extremists. I want to know why. I want to know why Chief Lewis and the SPD won't make a statement against racism, anti-Semitism, and treason. I want to know why people that were a part of a terrorist mob two weeks ago are walking around our town tonight. So I'm asking you, our Springfield city council, to find out why, to uphold our Constitution, and to find out whether any members of the Springfield Police Department, the city of Springfield employees, participated in anti-democratic attacks in either Salem or Washington DC. This police department has already shown us that they won't investigate themselves. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Neil?
Our next speaker is Jenny Osteen.
Hi Jenny, you're up.
Jenny, you should be able to speak now.
She's not coming through.
Jenny, can you hear us? Well, hold on Jenny for a moment. Our next speaker would be Holly Shaper. And Holly, if you unmute your microphone, there you go.
Can you hear me? Hey. Holly Shaper from Ward Two, as you know. I'm really going to echo what a lot of folks have already said tonight. So since the last regular session, our nation has been shaken to its core. First, there was an attempted violent overthrow of the US government by armed right-wing extremists. We've heard about the Springfield presence that was there. This is followed by reports of possible extremist violence coming again this week. So that's a very tense backdrop, which has us all on edge. During this tenuous time, when a reassuring or unifying message would be very welcomed, former Mayor Lundberg submitted her second and final letter of resignation. She could have chosen to focus her letter on unifying a clearly divided city or even offered you words of wisdom as you prepare to work towards solutions for these systemic problems. However, she instead chose to use her final official communication to attempt to discourage civic engagement and to broaden the division that currently exists. Worse yet, the implicit messages in her letter will continue to deepen the inequities that we need to work to correct, and they support an environment where white supremacist ideology can thrive. Luckily, you've so far chosen to walk a different path. You have embraced the challenges presented during public comment. You have chosen to engage with your constituents and have sought to broaden the accessibility of council meetings for everyone. I want to commend you for that. I also want to push for more. Council should immediately and publicly denounce white supremacy. Council should do this for the good of our community, including our small business owners who were angered when they suddenly had a group of heavily armed vigilantes patrolling Main Street in response to a peaceful march on June 6th. This was a march that was attended by parents with children, people with their dogs, our neighbors, city staff, our community. And yet, heavily armed vigilantes felt it was appropriate to patrol Main Street and to send a clear message that BIPOC folks and their allies are not welcome in Springfield. Council should do this for those who have been consistently harassed, threatened, and injured by both SPD and by local right-wing extremists. Denounce white supremacy for all of the BIPOC people and allies who risked their safety to give public testimony at the Independent Investigation Forum. Additionally, as others have mentioned, please investigate whether any SPD officers were present in Washington DC on January 6th and report that out publicly. EPD has already investigated and reported to the public that none of their officers were present. Springfield should do the same. We have a right to know. So please, continue on the path you're on and encourage more civic engagement instead of less. Please continue to allow participation, both virtual and when appropriate in person. And please join your colleagues from the area and denounce white supremacy immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. It's nice to hear you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Jay Smith. And Jennifer, if you unmute your microphone, we should be able to hear you. Okay, we're going to hold on Jennifer as well, and we'll go to our next speaker, Jennifer Potter.
Hi, can you hear me?
You can hear her.
Okay. My name is Jennifer Potter, and I'm a resident of Ward Three for over 20 years. And I just want to start by thanking all of you for your service. I know you're all volunteers, and this is not an easy job being on the city council, especially at this time, so I appreciate your work. And then echoing other speakers, I call on you to make a statement as a council condemning white supremacy. I think that is a really important message to send to our community at this time. And also, I keep hearing on the news that police departments all over the country, the National Guard, the military, are examining their staff people to make sure that they are not white supremacists and/or supporting domestic terrorism. And I call on the city of Springfield to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Neil?
Counsel, I believe we've got Jennifer Smith now ready. Jennifer, if you unmute your microphone.
Hi Jennifer.
Hello, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm also going to talk about what's, you know, obviously on our community's mind tonight. Local community members of so-called patriot organizations participated in the DC assault on the Capitol. They're seen on video, many images. You have some of these in your inboxes. People also breached the Oregon Capitol in Salem, participated in a riot in DC in December, participated in a riot with the Proud Boys in Portland in August, participated in injuring BIPOC BLM protesters in Salem in August, participated in counter protest in Thurston on July 29th. Still no charges for many of these crimes. The same people who have been protesting, assaulting BLM protesters since July in Springfield, including individuals who showed up to give Patriot Liberty speeches at Rick Brazil's community forum in December around the Thurston incident. I would ask that Springfield leadership and police need to take a strong, open verbal stance against white supremacy and white nationalist terrorist action. And I would say that Chief Lewis needs to stop referring to these people as the All Lives Matter group and take a little more realistic view of the situation. Journalists and BIPOC protest leaders have been wearing body armor for defense against armed white nationalist extremists in Springfield since July. Let that sink in. I'll leave you with this, words have meanings and consequences, and the result of the SPD's inaction over violent anti-BLM protesters has emboldened them. I also ask how many of our officers and staff within SPD, Fire EMS, and the broader Springfield City Government are members of extremist groups, such as the 3% oath keepers or other patriot militias? Thank you. I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you very much. Neil?
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Utterbeck. And Elizabeth, you should be ready to go.
Hi Elizabeth. Thank you Neil. Hello, counsel, it's Lizzie Utterback from Ward Three. These last four years have taught me that I cannot take democracy for granted. It doesn't work on its own. It requires community participation, so here I am again. I spoke last time about the importance of public comment. Then I read Christine Lundberg's final letter to counsel, in which her hurt and pain are obvious. Perhaps healing could have occurred had she acknowledged the part her family has played in causing harm to others. Instead, she chose to double down on protecting white supremacist values. I've started to notice what is referred to as dog whistles in Christine's communications, and I see those in Chief Lewis's remarks too. An example from her letter is when she writes about protecting our small-town values. Being a son downtown in a state that was founded with racial exclusion laws, this comment is absolutely a dog whistle. Without saying this directly, she is able to communicate that she wants to see Springfield continue to protect and reward white people and exclude BIPOC. continue to protect and reward white people and exclude BIPOC folks from those same privileges. Then she goes on to share her annoyance with people who spend their time trying to unduly influence counsel with comment. She named calls, you've heard from others about this. This was especially confusing to me as someone who does spend their time commenting during council meetings, because I have no way to unduly influence you. I have no power or authority over you. You are not my family members. I do not employ you. You are not receiving financial donations from me. If anything, I put myself at risk to make these statements here. So it makes me wonder what is going on where undue influence is occurring. Christine's comments support the type of behavior we saw in the Salem Capitol siege in December, and more recently, the attempted coup in DC where domestic terrorists subverted the democratic process with violence and threats of violence. This is important because we have residents, as you've heard here in Springfield, that participate in these activities, who have also assaulted peaceful protesters, and who have also used your public forum with Rick Brazil to further intimidate residents and push their white supremacist platforms. Another source of confusion was Chief Lewis's remarks on social media stating he was not aware of any threats this week, when he absolutely does know of these threats and does know about this person's participation in DC because they've been reported. You may have heard the term silence is violence. Unlike democracy, oppressive systems work without community participation. They go whether you support them or not, and they run nonstop. So in my role as a mere lowly commenter with nothing to influence you with, I'm asking that you denounce white supremacy. All joking aside, please take this to heart and make a clear statement. Please back this statement with action. Call for an immediate review of city employees, including police officers, to determine whether any participated in the attempted coup, and further screen them for membership of white supremacist organizations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Neil, more?
Chelsea Wilks. And Counsel, we have... We're down to our six speakers.
Down to six? Okay.
And Chelsea Wilks is the next speaker.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So my name's Chelsea Wilks, and I live in Ward 3. I wanted to respond to former Mayor Lundberg's letter of resignation. In her letter, as we know at this point, in her letter, she stated that a small group of citizens spend their time trying to unduly influence city council. She called these citizens gadflies. She effectively urged the city councils, sorry, city councilors, to ignore the concerns of these citizens. As one of those gadflies, I was insulted by Mayor Lundberg's dismissive remarks. My goal in attending and speaking at these meetings is to better the city that I live in and love. I take time out of my week to better understand how our local government works, the things it does well, and areas it couldn't improve. To be honest, making comments and asking for change is not easy for me. I don't enjoy speaking in front of people, as is probably obvious in this moment, nor do I like being confrontational. I do this because it's a civic duty, and I cannot in good conscience stay quiet. I found Mayor Lundberg's response not only insulting to those of us who are showing up and expressing our concerns, but also to you city councilors who have been taking our concerns seriously. I want to thank you for your efforts and implore the next mayor not to continue in Mayor Lundberg's steps, but to demonstrate a greater value for civic engagement, even though it may not always feel pleasant. Beyond being insulting to those of us who take the time each week to attend these meetings, Mayor Lundberg's letter reminded me of her response this summer to a Black Unity March in which she said, "Black Lives Matter and All Lives Matter." I was struck then by her missed opportunity to speak directly to citizens of Springfield who may genuinely not understand why "All Lives Matter," excuse me, is a non-response to the statement "Black Lives Matter." Black Lives Matter as a statement is not political. It's a matter of human dignity and civil rights. Our next mayor must do better than Mayor Lundberg in being informed about why black lives matter. To that end, I would like to ask city council to ask those interested in the mayoral position, specifically how they will address racial injustice in Springfield, and what their position is on police accountability and reform. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And by the way, you're a better speaker than I am. Next, next one.
Counsel, our next speaker is Brittany DeAlecante. And Brittany, you should be able to...
I, I think we've run through a lot of time than we normally do, and I hope, is it all right as the councilors, that we continue on with, with the speakers that we still have? Okay, yeah, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name is Brittany DeAlecante. I live in Ward 2. As many of you may remember, I'm also the recently appointed cultural minority representative on the Springfield Police Advisory Committee. I don't normally give comments, but I also saw Mayor Lundberg's resignation letter and felt it was relevant to my position to provide comment to counsel. I was admittedly pretty shocked by that letter. And again, as you all know, my position is specifically put in place so minority voices will have a chance for input. It is clear in the title of that position that minority voices are not the majority, and I was very concerned at the dismissiveness former Mayor Lundberg took towards those voices. Calling persistent quote-unquote "non-majority" voices gadflies made me very concerned that I will be considered a gadfly for simply fulfilling the duties of my position. And frankly, I am now scared for how I may be treated on the Police Advisory Committee. Although I understand that former Mayor Lundberg's position is not necessarily reflective of all leadership, I would very much appreciate some kind of statement or reassurance from council, SPD, and the future mayor that these sentiments are not reflective of council and that minority voices are valued in the city of Springfield. Again, as the cultural minority representative on the Springfield Police Advisory Committee, I would feel much safer and accepted in my position if this kind of statement were made. I yield my time, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Counselor, our next speaker is Diane Peterson.
Hi Diane.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sound great.
Hello. Hi, thank you. I'm here today to voice concerns about activity of violent white nationalists and white supremacists in our community, and to ask for action by the Springfield City Council. OPD reports at least three Oregonians who took part in the storming of the Oregon Capitol Building in December also joined in the mob attack on the US Capitol two weeks ago. One of the three is a resident of Springfield. These individuals do not appear to have been arrested or charged, and are very likely back in Oregon looking for more opportunities to incite violence. In light of the Capitol attacks and the increasing activity by groups like the Proud Boys, whose recent rally in Eugene turned violent, I call on the Springfield City Council to denounce white supremacy and antisemitism, and to create a plan to protect our citizens, particularly those who are too often the direct target of these hate groups. We cannot be a community that celebrates Dr. Martin Luther King, his dream and his work, and also tolerate the ideology and behavior of violent white nationalists, white supremacists, domestic terrorists. I've lived in Oregon, Eugene, and Springfield for 10 years, but I was born and raised in rural southwest Virginia near the capital of the Confederacy. We regularly took school field trips to sites of Civil War battles. The South has a deep history of racism, but I have never seen the level of overt white supremacy and antisemitism that I have seen here in Oregon. Our community, our state, needs a reckoning with its racist past and present. We need your immediate action to denounce white supremacy, antisemitism, and then do more. Many great suggestions have been presented here tonight. I look forward to seeing your response. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Neil, how many more do we have?
We have three speakers left. The next one would be Kristin Vignetta.
Okay, Kristin?
Hi, good evening councilors. My name is Kirsten Vignetta, and I live in Ward 2. The day after Martin Luther King Day is an opportune time to bring up former Springfield Police Officer Scott McKee's guest viewpoint, published in the Eugene Weekly on November 5th of 2020 titled "Exposed Truths: Hate and Evil Hide Behind Truth and Injustice at Springfield Police." In it, McKee describes, among other things, how he kept a framed image of MLK giving his famous "I have a dream" speech, the back of which was secretly vandalized by a colleague with a slur, basically criticizing McKee for seeing MLK favorably. And McKee only noticed that on the day he was packing up his belongings from SPD. This story is especially salient in the present context in which the unchecked presence of white supremacists in law enforcement is of national concern. As previous speakers have clearly already voiced, Springfield has a white supremacist presence that is quite visible to us all. And so my question, which echoes what many have already said, is this. What stance will city council and SPD take in regards to white supremacy? And what is SPD doing, and will be doing, in the future to ensure that its officers are not affiliated or even remotely sympathetic to the white supremacist cause that has a strong presence within our city? What side of history will our city be on? Many of us so-called gadflies will be paying close attention to your next steps, and we hope that you will make the right choice for the majority of Springfield, which is non-white supremacists. I hope that is clear. If there is a minority despite visible, it is the white supremacist of our city. And I hope that that will be visible in how our government and our police department is handled and managed, and what principles are going to lead these institutions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Neil?
Counsel, our next speaker is Chris McAllister.
Hi Chris.
Good evening, Counsel. My name is Chris McAllister. I live in Ward 3. Gadflies. I'm bothered by the statement our duly-elected mayor gave as she chose to give up her role for no reason directly affected by her voice or her actions after the people spoke to have her serve. This failure to honor the people's voice speaks to the silenced cries over the past decade. It is ironic that our people are referred to by this reference that originated in a writing called "The Apology," for there is no apology for the inaction of this body until we have bodies, and then maybe we will have action. From the brown, black, unhoused, and other unserved voices who live in fear and do not call the police because it's more likely to cause harm than bring safety, to those displaced without safe places due to the economic and racial divisions in our community. Three children dying is what it took for Main Street reform. Dozens of our unhoused have died while waiting for reforms that have been asked for by the people, but been denied by the missing political will to please a small portion of this community. Contrarians we are not. Impatience is growing, as does our social debt and liability. People were allowed to bring bear mace and weaponized signs on city property and were heard by our city, yet the victims of our city inaction go denied in both their voice and in the outcomes that this city brings. We are not here to harass or be controversial. Our people cry because they are harmed without due process and are not honored in their sacrifice to speak against the cultural and systemic abuse that happens here. The status quo needs to go for the sake of our peoples in Oregon and in Springfield. We need to have our votes matter and our people considered. The council listens to local groups on economic needs, and the results are easy to see. The social groups who advise the city do not have the same clarity. Let our people grow. We really need you to hear the people and honor the fact that when we build outcomes for our people, that they consider everybody, not just the angry, not just the hurt, but everybody. We need to actually do long-term planning. And the last 10 years have had a lot of people opening up voices to be heard but doing nothing with that information. Data does not matter. Outcomes do not matter. National and state plans do not matter. But 10 businesses in downtown can chase away opportunities that have served the needs of our people. Small voices have been able to disrupt and derail progress years in the making, and our staff's loyal and more than enough actions to try and resolve these are often denied by the lack of action on council. I really hope that you hear the people and that you speak truth, because our people are hurting and they're dying, and they need to be seen by you. I yield.
Thank you, Chris. Next speaker, Neil?
Counsel, the next speaker is Thomas Lawrence, who was the last in the queue. We also had a speaker Ginny Osteen, whose microphone didn't initially work. I would be happy to go back after Thomas, if you would like.
If the council is okay with that, it's not her fault. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So Thomas Lawrence. Thomas, your microphone is muted.
All right, are we good?
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. I would first like to say to all of you councilors, I do see a change in a positive way. I can, I mean, I can see your faces, right? We're on video, so I can see that you're all listening, and I can see that you're all, you're all taking this in. And, you know, we've talked before about the process being part of the problem, and, you know, we'll get to that as we get to it. I would also like to just further talk about what everyone else has mentioned, but really focus on what this other group is that we keep talking about. It's not "All Lives Matter." And after DC, we can also prove conclusively they're also not the back blue crowd, even though that they have been repeating over and over again that they support the police. They disobeyed, assaulted, and ultimately killed a police officer in DC because they don't support the police, they support the people who oppose Black Lives Matter. That needs to be crystal clear and understood at this point. They do not care about this town. They're not in this queue. They're not talking about how much they love Springfield. What they love is the status quo that allows them to be them. And they hate anybody who's asking for equality, anybody who's telling them what they can and cannot do. As soon as police pushed back in Salem, their entire attitude changed. They said the same things that Black Lives Matter extremists, the ones who are asking for complete abolition, they said the exact same thing. They told them, "We supported you, no longer." They told them to go quit their jobs because they are bad people. They don't care about anything except for keeping the status quo. And I'm so glad someone else said this, because I was probably gonna pull back, but Oregon is arguably the most racist state in this country that is not part of the Confederacy. We have one of the worst white supremacist histories, and we are not part of the South, but we were a state then. We have people all over the state flying Confederate flags. For what? People always try to defend it by saying it's about our heritage. We're not part of that heritage. That's not our grandfather's flag. It's people who want to keep the status quo of white supremacy in this country alive. End story. That needs to be crystal clear, and that starts with all of you as well. It also starts with Chief Lewis, who I, we've said more than enough, has made it very clear how he feels about all this. The sides have been drawn, but we need to make sure that we understand that there's more than just two sides. There's, there's multiple sides. They are against anybody who is not on their side. They have attacked everybody, including the police that they claim to support. We have to call it out for what it is. It's not "All Lives Matter." They don't care about "All Lives." They care about the status quo staying the same as it is, which allows them to do whatever it is that they want. And that's the privilege that we all have, most of us, as white people, straight white people in this state, country, et cetera. Please help, as everyone else has said, call them out, make it very clear. And Chief Lewis, I would love to hear a statement of you condemning it, rather than telling people to ignore governor's orders. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have the other last speaker, Neil?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll give one more chance to Ginny, Ginny Osteen. Can you hear us Ginny?
Not coming through.
Sorry, it doesn't sound like it's gonna work.
I guess we'll have to close the public part of this now. Sorry Ginny. And council comments, council response now. Leonard? Something, I forgot names.
Yeah, that's okay. Thanks Steve. I want to thank everybody for their comments tonight, and I'd also like to thank Mayor Lundberg for her years of service. He performed an often thankless job with dedication to the city. I cannot state strongly enough how imperative it is that we continue to hear from the public at these meetings, and particularly from people of color. The, the idea that Brittany, who spoke tonight, would feel hesitant to express herself at Police Advisory Committee meetings, that alarms me. And it's something that I take very seriously. And I would like to just say that I know that all of my fellow councilors join me in thinking that civic engagement is a sign of a healthy society. And democracy does die in the dark. So we would all urge you to continue coming out to these meetings and speaking your conscience. So we would all urge you to continue coming out to these meetings and speaking your conscience. Thanks.
Rodley? Counselor Rodley?
Thank you. And I want to thank everyone who shared tonight and shared the tension and the fear and the concerns that so many are feeling. And first, I would also like to acknowledge the years of public service that former Mayor Lundberg offered to the city of Springfield, and I appreciate her stepping into leadership and weathering many challenges and changes. Next, I would like to say that our former mayor does not speak for everyone in Springfield and does not speak for me. I understand the ways in which this resignation letter felt disrespectful and hurtful to the many passionate and involved residents who take the time to advocate, research, speak up, and work to build a more inclusive future Springfield. And I have heard from several people before tonight, as probably many of the other counselors have, about the already challenged by barriers to authentic engagement. And I've heard just how these words made them feel. If we truly are dedicated to representing and serving all of Springfield, this means the people who voted and the people who did not. This means the young people who have yet to have a seat at the tables, but who have every right to expect to be welcome and considered. This means new arrivals. This means those who own properties. And like Chris McAllister said, those who are unhoused, those who are business owners and those who are not. This means the conversation, the process, and the actual city government belongs to everyone. And it is my honor and my duty to listen respectfully and to consider the voices who ask to be heard and those who are not yet in the room. And finally, I think of us all as collaborators. We elected public servants and community members. And for democracy to work, as Counselor Stare said, we build trust through engagement and cooperation, not by merely turning to the will of the presumed majority. I hear you. I see you. And we are all in this together. And I thank you for continuing to show up.
Next counselor. Merrily, Counselor Merrily?
Yes. I just want, I want to, I don't know how to say how heartfelt I thank everyone for showing up and talking and giving us their viewpoints and their perspectives. I've been around several decades. I still get enlightened by the information that people offer from their perspectives when they speak to us. No matter how long I've been around, I still have a lot to learn. And I also have a lot of experience behind me in order to be able to put things together and try to work the best we can for our entire community. One of the things I have on my council page is that communication is the key to community, and it really is. And if you don't speak to us, we don't know what you're thinking. We can't read your minds. And I appreciate, especially over the last several months, the degree of respect that our community members have had in coming and speaking to us. As frustrated as they might have gotten with us, or as frustrated as they seem like they might be with us at times, they have respected us and respected our position and understood that they may be giving us information that we don't have. And so we need to be able to take that to heart and hear what they have to say. It doesn't mean we may, it doesn't mean we're always going to agree or we're going to positively act on everything. But I will, I too will speak for the rest of the council and myself in saying that we do listen and we do hear you. We don't always have an immediate answer, but it does, it does get incorporated into how we do things and what we think and how we, how we work with each other and for the betterment of the community. So, thank you very much. I will continue to listen and try to incorporate the different things, different perspectives, that especially ones that I have not had or have not heard before. And, and we can hopefully together collectively, I like Cory's comment on collaboration, collectively collaborating. We can look forward to getting just an even better future for Springfield. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Next person I'd like to speak. Okay, Counselor Van Gordon?
Yeah, I just thought I would add a couple of thoughts to what people have mentioned. So, one of the things I just want to keep emphasizing is the importance of the public dialogue that we've had the last couple of months. It is probably been at its highest point since any time that I've been on council. And it makes public policy sort of better. Sometimes we don't respond to all of it. Sometimes we don't think about all of it. Sometimes it takes like three weeks before it goes by, before it really sinks in. But the reality is we're listening to what is on your mind and what your concerns are. And it's sort of influencing and thinking about like where we need to go to as a city. So like one, one of the messages I really heard is that people want to know that it matters when they show up. It matters when you show up. You know, we're a big diverse city with people on both ends of the political spectrum, which means that when we have good civic discourse, it may sound a little bit messy, but we're better because of it. So please keep showing up. The other thing, I was looking at the note, you know, when it went, as far as, this is the first time we've met as a council since, since the events in Washington DC, the riot at the Capitol, whatever term that you would choose to use it. I think it's worth noting that Counselor Mo really represented where we were all at when he signed on to the Land County statement. That's, that statement really came out for the board chairs and the board and the mayors to be able to sign. But if we could have all signed it, we would have. In our, in our community, you know, there's no, like, political violence isn't welcome at all, right? Like treating people poorly isn't welcome at all. And one thing I want to be really clear, and I've always said this, is that people in this community need to be able to call the police when something bad happens. The police here are here to serve us. That is how we hold people accountable from, if people commit crimes. And I just want to reiterate the importance of, you know, that police are here to serve everybody. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Counselor Pictionary?
At the risk of sounding redundant, I concur with everybody that has spoke before me. And I know that sounds like a cop-out, but I don't know what else to add, other than the fact that, that they are speaking the same things that I am thinking. And that I, I too appreciate, you know, as much as sometimes it stinks to hear, but I got to tell you, it's important. And I always appreciate the folks that are talking. And I take in a lot and I consider every one of them and I appreciate it. And that being said, I think I'm ready to move on. But, but again, thank you for all your input. And I appreciate fellow counselors' input. And, and we do take it to heart, every one of us, and we know because it's our job. So, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. And as regards to me, I'm here to serve you people and I try and do the very best I can. I hope naturally I do what you want, but I don't. So I need to hear from you. So please call me, write me, tell me, and I'll listen. And that's important to me. It's, city's important to me. The public's important to me. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to correspondence.
Counsel, your next item is correspondence and petitions. One item, correspondence from Christine Lundberg regarding her resignation as mayor of Springfield for a term of four years starting in 2021.
I move to accept correspondence for filing.
We had a second?
A second, unless Counselor Van Gordon seconded.
No, you can go ahead and second. I'll third it during a minute.
I was going to say I'll third it.
So now our counselors are fighting, huh? Okay. Rule called, Neil?
Yes, Counselor Van Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Mo?
Yes.
Counselor Rodley?
Yes.
Counselor Stare?
Yes.
Counselor Woodrow?
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary?
Yes. Okay, accepted. Now we move on to the big one. Mayor appointment. City attorney want to comment here on what we're going to do?
Yes, your next item is business from the city council interim mayor appointment. And both city manager Nancy Newton and our city attorney Mary Bridget Smith are here for the staff report.
Go ahead.
Good evening, counsel. It's Mary Bridget Smith, the city attorney. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. What I'd like to do tonight is just set up the actions before you for this item of the interim mayor appointment. There are two parts to this item. One is to find that a vacancy has occurred due to Christine Lundberg's resignation. And then the second will be to appoint the interim mayor. After the council addresses the vacancy by a motion to find that the vacancy has occurred, the council can move on to discuss and appoint the interim mayor. There are two counselors that have expressed their interest in serving as the interim mayor, counselors Van Gordon and Stare. They are deemed nominated by submitting their written questions and answers earlier in the fall. So the council doesn't have to go through a nomination process tonight. The council can discuss the appointment. Anybody can make, counselors can make a statement if they would like. When the discussion is finished, Counselor Mo can call for a vote. And how the vote will work is that when Neil calls your name, you could just name the person, your selection, that you're voting for. So state your choice by the person's name. This appointment requires a majority of the council, that's four out of the six votes. If the council doesn't get to that result, you can go back to discussion and keep voting. But that is, that'll be the process for this item. Are there any questions?
Counselors?
I, any question? Because I'll move to accept, I move to accept that the letter from Christine Lundberg has created a vacancy for the position of mayor.
Second? Sean, did you second it?
Yes, I'll second it.
You got to realize your face is in the shade. It's hard to see you. Okay, Neil, take a vote.
Counselor Van Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Mo?
Yes.
Counselor Rodley?
Yes.
Counselor Stare?
Yes.
Counselor Woodrow?
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary?
Yes. Okay, that's been accepted. Now, we're going to move on to where we're going to take a vote and select one of the two candidates.
That's correct, Counselor Mo. So if there's any discussion or statements that folks would like to make, now would be the time before you vote.
Counselor Stare?
Thanks, Steve. Well, if I could summarize the ways that I could see that we could be moving in a better direction in the city right now, it would start with the process by which we're making this appointment right now. Early on, we had the opportunity to open the process to outside candidates, people outside the council. And we also had the opportunity to allow the public to vote on this vacancy. And in both cases, we opted not to. And I feel that if there's a perception now in the city that we're less than fully accountable and less than fully transparent, then this is the kind of decision that we're making. I mean, it's due to this kind of decision. So, people on the council, I have gotten to know everybody on the council over the last four years. And I think everyone on this council is a good and a decent person who truly wants what's best for the people of Springfield. And that said, I think that the challenge that we're facing right now is to make this process and make our general decision-making less of a closed circle and truly open the process to people and voters here in Springfield. We are considering a large number of fairly ambitious projects right now as far as building is concerned. And I would urge us all to consider the impact that these large projects are going to have and whether it's going to be positive or whether it's going to be negative on the voters. Because I can guarantee you that they're paying close attention to what's going on right now. So when I took this job, I considered it a great honor to serve as a counselor here in Springfield. And I would consider it a great honor to serve as mayor. Thank you.
Other counselors, would you speak? I, I agree with Leonard as far as trying to, earlier try and get out there and select a replacement for the mayor. In December, I think I pushed for that. And suddenly I was sort of told that until Christine officially resigned, she could walk back in and take that position. And that was up until just, just a few days ago. So anything we would have done then, done then would have been wasted. And so we sort of had to wait until we got the letter. And now tonight, we're making a decision. We shared made it earlier. I wish we had. I don't think we could have. At least that's my, my opinion. So I want to tell the public that I, I know what they wanted. I wanted to do what they wanted, but I don't think there was any way we could legally do that. That's just my thinking. Any else? So, Sean, Counselor Van Gordon?
Yeah, and I think it's worth noting that this is probably the, I don't want to, like, the most extreme example of how a vacancy could occur. And it definitely was challenged by the updates from the two terms. And the one comment I guess I wanted to make about, about serving for, serving as mayor is that I think from, from eternally, like, to the, to the rest of the council, the thing that's important to me, we work well when we work together. And I think it's critical for us to take a step back as we go forward here. And, you know, if we, if it's Leonard or if it's myself, once we get whoever the new counselor is here, is really think about where people's policy objectives are in this council and really form a kind of a more working council so that people are running and working on policy objectives that they want to accomplish. And really, to me, that says, you know, walking around and sort of sitting down and talking to people about their goals, what committees that they want to sit on, and really getting the right people in the right place. When we're, when, you know, we're successful as a group, it's a really interesting experience being on the council because we're individuals and we're a body at the same time. And I just, I just wanted to point out that one of the keys to addressing some of these long-term issues is really getting to who's doing what, giving people on the council enough running room to sort of work problems that they see so that we're all sort of more accountable to us as a group and finally to the public.
Thank you. Counselor? Rodley?
Like, which counselor? Some of this is going to, you've heard it, but I was up in the middle of the night preparing it and so I want to share it. And I know that I have been, when I was campaigning and even in the last couple of weeks, I've been very outspoken in my criticism of this process that was chosen by y'all, my current colleagues. And I do think that limiting who can be considered for interim mayor as well as who can be involved in the process is a missed opportunity. And this is a vestige of the past that a lot of the folks were talking about earlier tonight. Sequestering power and self-selection are hallmarks of white supremacy and the opposite of accessible, inclusive government that I would like to see and that I would like to be part of. And I think it bears mention that I was neither heartily encouraged nor heavily endorsed candidate as I was approaching joining the council. And I'm quite confident that had I gone through the application process, I would not have been selected. So it was through the will of more than 12,000 voting Springfield neighbors that I'm in this seat. And that is how I think transparent democracy functions. So we've heard the outcry, many Springfield residents around this process. And whether we are able to shift the charter as quickly as folks want or we are able to create a better way for us to do this moving forward, I think that it's absolutely necessary for filling these empty vacancies to, in the future. So that being said, I'm also serving within a system and a structure that existed before I got here. And I am one voice and a relatively new one at that. And I am absolutely committed to working collaboratively and creatively with whoever is selected to serve as interim mayor tonight and our future counselor, because there will be an additional counselor joining us. And I will look forward to a democratically elected mayoral process in 2022. Because the process and the people are not necessarily one in the same. And I also believe that all of my colleagues are passionate and committed to serving the best interest of our shared Springfield. As Counselor Woodrow said, we may not always agree or share the same values and understanding. However, I also believe that our differences represent the differences of our many neighbors and the residents. And we get to try to work through them together. And I am very heartened by this meeting and us flexing our muscles to have these conversations in public and to be able to agree to disagree or disagree and not agree. So, that's my, that's what I want to say. So that's my, that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Counselor Rodley? I think we're at the point now where we're going to go through a vote process, election process. Neil?
Do you wanna? We do a roll call. Counselor Van Gordon?
I vote for myself.
Counselor Mo?
Van Gordon.
Counselor Rodley?
Counselor Stare?
Counselor Stare?
I vote for myself.
Counselor Woodrow?
Van Gordon?
And Counselor Pictionary?
Hmm. Interesting position. If it's a tie, then we keep deliberating. If it's not, we don't. But that being said, it's how the process works, and I support Sean.
Okay, 42. Sean? Apparently you are the new mayor for the next two years.
Counselor, this is Mary Bridget again. So just a point of order here in process. So that's uh four votes for Counselor Van Gordon to serve as interim mayor. Just wanted to ask on the record that you accept the appointment.
Counselor Van Gordon?
I do.
Okay, there's no need to do an additional motion. Um, so now the next step will be to move on to the oath of office. That's attachment two in your packet. Um, if you would like, you could just re- raise your right hand and read the oath or we could do it the more traditional way where you repeat after me whatever works best for you.
Um, if they can find it, then that would be great. Usually I stumble when you read it back to me.
I'll go for, um, if it's attachment to you on the mayoral uh appointment packet.
There it is.
All right. I, Sean Van Gordon, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States in this state and that I will, to the best of my ability, faithfully perform the duties of interim mayor of the city of Springfield, Oregon during my continuance there.
Wonderful. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Now, as I understand it, you as interim mayor will run the remain, remainder of the meeting and help find your replacement. I want people to know that both candidates for the mayor position are excellent people, absolutely excellent, and either one of them, both of them, would be good for the city. Would have no problems either one of them.
Well, you didn't tell me I had to finish the rest of the meeting. I said, you didn't tell me I had to finish the rest of the meeting, Steve.
Yes, you do. At least that's instructions I ha- I have here.
Yeah.
No, I, I know. The, but I want to thank you guys for your support. It means a lot to me. It, it means a lot that you put faith in my, in, in me taking on this next journey. Uh, next item, please.
Um, Mayor Van Gordon, the next item is council vacancy. And again, Nancy Newton and Mary Bridget Smith are here for the staff report.
Uh, good evening, council. It's Mary Bridget again. Um, this item before you is the process for filling the current council vacancy for Ward One. Uh, the item is asking you to approve the process and the schedule and then authorize staff to move forward. The process um is set out in the packet. It includes a written application and in-person interviews. All meetings that you would have regarding this um matter would be subject to public meetings law and in the open. Um, it's estimated with an end appointment date of March first. Um, staff is prepared with public outreach um to start tomorrow. So moving forward with pushing out on the website and social media um about the opening. And so really just looking for your questions or feedback about the process or any, if you want any additional qualifications for the candidate that should be included.
Counselor Woodrow?
Yes, I just wanted to say I looked at what, what was given to us in the packet and I'm fine with the timeline and the outreach and how everything is set up at the moment unless somebody has a comment that I hadn't thought of, but I'm, I'm fine with it.
Uh, Counselor Pictionary?
I wanted to look at the um residency requirements. And if there is, um, if it would make sense to um basically have a requirement, I know it has a requirement to live in the ward, but have a time and time residency there starting tonight, for example, or 30-day or whatever time period, for example, it would take for a, um, for an election process to where the person that is potentially, uh, or maybe we can just talk about it through discussion as far as qualifications are concerned. But uh, to me, it would be a basic qualification if you have a person that is putting themselves in for um that ward, that they have some experience or some, some life in that ward or, you know, some connection to that ward as opposed to a brand-new resident there.
Uh, Counselor Stare?
Thanks, Sean. Um, I hope this isn't a dead issue already, but in the interest of consistency, I would love to see um if we can wait until May to have an election for the open seat in, on the May ballot.
Um, Counselor Stare, if I could just respond, so the um charter has the filling of the vacancy for the counselors as the same as the mayor. So we can't um call a, a special election um to, to do that, if that's, if that's what you're asking.
That was what I was asking. Thank you.
And to Counselor Pictionary's um point about um residency requirements, um, he's correct, the charter requires that the person live in that ward. Any additional residency requirement, like, for example, if they were to live there for a certain amount of time, if you make that a qualification from the council, um, that means that no one can imply unless they meet that residency requirement. Um, so that's something to consider. Or the council could just use that, as Counselor Pictionary was saying in their deliberations when they see who all applies, then can look at, well, how long have each of these persons lived in the ward or in the community?
Counselor Rodley?
Thank you. So I, I would be, I would be interested in less barriers as opposed to more. And this is my first time through this process. So is there any way to add in additional um public participation as opposed to people submit, it just comes to the council? Is there a way for us to somehow let the public weigh in, let them vet, let them ask questions? Is there, is there a way for us to do that so that we at least lean into a more inclusive process?
Um, I can start and then um Nancy may have some input as well. I think the answer to that is uh yes. Uh, there are ways that we can have the public be more involved. Um, the, all of the um, in the schedule there are, uh, the meetings are corresponding to already scheduled council meetings, and those do have business from the audience. So people would have the opportunity to come speak or um also provide written uh input to the council as they always, as they already do. Um, but we could certainly look at um more specific ways to get uh input from the public about um candidates and also input on the candidates if you'd like.
So this is Nancy. I, I'll weigh in here for just a moment. Um, I think that's a, a, a great question. I was just thinking in my mind about a public process that's largely online. So how do we, you know, pull that together? But I think um the important part would be um putting together a timeline where we could build in some touch points with the community. For, so we would, one, we would first have to do the, an, an application period. Let, give people time to consider whether or not they want to submit an application and then also to complete that application. Um, and then allow staff to kind of collect the materials, put that together, and then maybe have a um some kind of a, a forum that we could uh do online where, you know, maybe we can um have people give input. They would need to know who the candidates were. So we would have to have a period where we would advertise that. So we would need to be really specific that people were giving, you know, um consent. We would um obviously redact any personal information, but for people to see applica- their application materials would, I think, be important. So staff can um put together a process and bring that forward to you either at our next meeting or in a, in a counselor memo. But I, just off the top of my head, I'm thinking it will extend the um, the timeline a little bit, but we could certainly build that in.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
The, Counselor Pictionary?
So I, I, if I'm, if I got my times correct, there's seven opportunities for the public to become involved in this opportu- in this selection process. And it doesn't look like we have got very stringent limits as to how long they can talk and, and, and ask questions. And it seems that, you know, that is, that's a lot of ample time. And I would like to have the position filled so we can be a full count, a full court, so to speak. But without shaving off and not doing it, our due diligence. But I think that seven times would, seems like that would be a, an ample amount of time for people to ask questions and be part of the process.
Um, Council, this is Mary Bridget again. One option that we have, um, kind of a low-tech option, but we already have a CMO uh email address, and that could be promoted once we know who the candidates are and to invite public input. That might be um another way so the public knows um that you really are looking for their input. So that could be um one option um as well to get you more input from folks.
Yeah, I would be fine with, you know, providing or, or, you know, you know, accentuating a, a time in which say, hey, we really want to hear from you on this date or something like that. That's fine. I, I've just, um, it's already going into March. And I would, I would like to have that position filled so we, we're, like I said, a full court and move on with things and have a decide, a decision-making process that's strong. I'm looking for other people, yeah.
Counselor Woodrow?
Um, I, I agree. I think the input is important, but I also think that the system is already set up to get that input. Um, I, I, looking at the, uh, looking at what was done in the past and it, and the opportunity is there for people to um, to uh express their opinion and, and express their um, uh, what's the word I want? Um, perspectives on, on uh the, of the potential appointment of the next counselor. Um, I, yeah, we, I think the reason I'm leaning that way is that we are seeing a very active community right now. And I would like to see that community take advantage of the opportunity that they have to speak in that, in that session. And I don't think, at this point, I don't think we need to do extra. I think um, I think they, I think we do have a community that's, that's recognizing that, uh, that they can come and, and voice their opinion. So I, I would like to see us utilize that. And, and, and to get the, I'd like to see the, we, we have so much work ahead of us. I want to see the, I want to see the position filled so that we can keep going.
Counselor Mo?
I'd like to see us get up to full speed as, as fast as we can. Though I do want the best candidate possible for that position. We've been through COVID, fire, Thurston issue, and vaccinations. We got a lot of stuff to address. It's very important for the people, and I, I want to get moving on it. So that's where I go.
Um, and then I'll make one quick comment before, before I entertain a motion. I think one of the critical things is throughout the whole process, people aren't gonna have opportunities, right? There won't be a one event where we're gonna put a sign in and says, this is the time to comment. Throughout the whole thing, feel free to give your feedback. Anybody else? I think we need a motion if somebody wants to uh fire that one up.
I'll make, no, I don't have anything written in front of me here, but.
I do at the bottom of the second. At the bottom of the second page.
I can make a motion if you want.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the process for appointing an interim city counselor.
That's what I was gonna say.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, Neil, could you call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Van Gord- or Mayor Van Gordon, sorry.
And I'll get a vote on this one.
Oh, yeah. Counselor Mo?
Yes.
Counselor Rodley?
Yes.
Counselor Stare? Counselor Stare?
He's thinking.
I think he's frozen.
He's froze.
Or he's really still.
Counselor Woodrow?
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary?
Yes.
I think we've got enough technically to go on if, let's see, give a letter in a second and see if it comes back.
Can we text him or call him or?
He's calling in. Just one moment. I have Counselor Stare on speaker before we get him back if you would like to hear his vote on the last item.
Yeah, sorry, everybody. My um screen froze up. I'm a yes. Thanks.
Okay, it sounds like it's five to zero. The motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is business from the city council.
Anybody have business? Counselor Rodley?
I came prepared to speak tonight. I really just wanted to reiterate that I appreciated Counselor Mo stepping in the last couple of weeks. I appreciated the statement that you signed on to from the county and did it quickly. And I also appreciated the statement that the city and Counselor Mo signed on for Martin Luther King Junior Day. So I want to thank you for your service as pre-interim mayor in the last couple of weeks and let you know I appreciate that.
I'm not gone. So thank, thank you very much for that.
Any other business? All right, next item?
Next item is business from the city manager.
Uh, good evening, counselors. This is Nancy. I do have a one quick item for business, from business from the city manager. It's a piece of good news. And I'd actually like Neil Agati to uh share this big uh good news because he's been working very hard on this project. Oh, great. Well, thank you, Nancy. Uh, so council, we wanted to share uh some news on Markola Meadows, which is a project that's very important to all of you and you've been working on. Uh, our incredible DPW staff led by our project planner, Andy Limbert, and then a fantastic team of people from all departments within the city have brought Phase 1A of the Markola Meadows Master Plan Project to substantial completion. So on last, last Friday, staff issued the very first building permit over the counter for the first 29 lots. And Tom Boyad, our DPW Division Director, um, and Jim Donovan, who's a planning supervisor, they met with DR Horton Superintendent on Friday, and they're excited to get to work. And I could tell you on Saturday, they were out there working. And so this is a huge project based on the developers' projections. They're looking at 750 units. Um, this includes 425 single detached dwellings and about 325 multifamily units. So a huge project, lots of steps ahead, uh, lots of challenges that we'll work through, but some great and professional work is taking place. And we wanted you to have a heads up. They already have a sign up there if you're looking to buy a place.
Uh, Counselor Pictionary?
Neil, would you please um extend our, our, my, I'll speak for myself, my uh deepest appreciation for the work that the staff has done. I've been in the background looking at that and been involved with some of that. And uh, it's been an immense amount of work, and they have really had to, really had to work together. It was not um an adverse situation. It was really a partnership situation. And I appreciate the work from, from Andy on up and, and across from all the, you know, the fire department, all those different agent or departments that have to be signing off on those. all those different agent or departments that have to be signing off on those permits and the process, so very much thank you.
Yes.
All right.
Any business from the city manager?
No further business, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy, any business from the city attorney? No other business from the city attorney?
Then we are adjourned, thank you, everybody, have a great night.
Night.